Good evening and welcome. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, November 14th, 2017. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Riverside Elementary School, Kendu Gaskins and Colton Jabowski. First Kendu will come forward and deliver the invocation. She will be followed by Colton who will come forward and deliver the pledge. Kendu, will you please come forward and tell us a little about yourself before we get started?
Good evening Chairman Hunter, Dr. Kilgore, and school board members. My name is Kendall Gaskins and I am in the fifth grade at Riverside Elementary School. I enjoy spending time with my mom, solving math problems, and writing stories. When I grow up, I want to be a business owner.
Alright, alright, very nice. Well Kendu, that's so wonderful, you want to be a business huh? What type of business would you like to be in?
To own my own nail salon and hair salon.
Wow, you're gonna make a lot of money. Well, thank you very much. Um, and, invocation? Yes?
To celebrate American Education Week, I will read a poem about dreams. "Let No One Steal Your Dreams" by Paul Cookson. Let no one steal your dreams, let no one tear apart the burning of ambition that fires the drive inside your heart. Let no one steal your dreams, let no one tell you that you can't, let no one hold you back, let no one tell you that you won't. Set your sights and keep them fixed, set your sights on high, let no one steal your dreams, your only limit is the sky. Let no one steal your dreams, follow your heart, follow your soul, for only when you follow them will you feel truly whole. Set your sight and keep them fixed, set your sights on high, let no one steal your dreams, your only limit is the sky.
Alright. Kendu, that was lovely, very, very lovely. Thank you very much. And then we'll have Colton, uh, will you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before the pledge?
Good evening Chairman Hunter, Dr. Kilgore, and school board members. My name is Colin Jabowski. I am in the second grade at Riverside Elementary School. My hobbies are playing with my bow and arrow and, wait, playing Minecraft and reading. When I grow up, I want to be a hunter. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's give those two young people a round of applause. Supporting Kendu and Colton tonight are their family members and school family. Could you please stand and be recognized? Uh, the board appreciates your encouragement that you have given these students and we thank you for bringing them here to the meetings this evening. Okay. Uh, next we have item 1.04, board recognitions?
Yes, tonight we have some really exciting recognitions. We're gonna recognize an award-winning building of ours and then we're gonna recognize two award-winning groups of folks, including the school board members. So, let's go down front.
Good evening. I have the honor of presenting this month's honorees. Learning by design is one of the country's premier sources for innovative education design. This prestigious industry magazine recognizes outstanding school and college projects. Architectural, engineering, and design firms and educational institutions may submit entries for consideration. This year, the architectural firm of Greman Parker submitted our newest school for review, Discovery STEM Academy, with success. Discovery STEM Academy earned one of the five grand prize awards for best education design. Joining us this evening to celebrate this recognition are Plant Services Executive Director Keith Webb, would you please come forward? And school principal Christine Pilger and assistant principal Dina Boyd. Paul Klee, the principal architect at Greman Parker who worked on this project, was unable to join us this evening, but we thank Mr. Klee and his team for working with Mr. Webb and the other members of our discovery team, or of a Discovery STEM Academy Design Committee. A panel of six architects and educational facility planners reviewed 68 submissions from across the country and selected five grand prize award-winning designs. The panel noted that the grand prize winners combined all of the elements that make a learning environment successful: 21st century learning, community needs, connectivity, safety, sustainability, and purposeful functional design. The school was designed by Greman Parker Architects and built by Oyster Point Construction. It features 36 classrooms, collaborative learning zones, a two-level media center with a project-based learning area, a community resource area, a courtyard with outdoor learning spaces, and an amphitheater with a stage that connects to the fitness lab for indoor and outdoor performances. There's more good news to share with you this evening. Today, we learned that Discovery STEM Academy won the Silver Design Award in the Virginia School Boards Association's Exhibition of School Architecture Contest. The award will be presented tomorrow during the annual V SBA convention. Earlier this year, the school also earned the Best Design Award in the New Elementary School category from the Virginia Chapter of Association for Learning Environments. So if you haven't had the opportunity to just drive by or stop in, I'm sure the school staff would be more than happy to show it off. But again, congratulations to all who worked on the design and the construction of Discovery Our custodians are the caretakers of our schools and offices. They ensure that our buildings and the surrounding grounds are safe and clean. Our dedicated custodians ensure that repairs and maintenance are routinely addressed and they work tirelessly to ensure the success of athletic events, student performances, meetings, and special events. In a school, they play an even greater role, for they, along with our other dedicated support staff members, are the key elements of a successful educational environment, as they contribute to the health, safety, attitude, and pride of our students. Each summer, the School Custodial Services Department conducts its annual Cleanest School Campaign. School custodial teams are invited to participate in the contest to earn the Cleanest School designation. A team of supervisors from Plant Services visits each participating school and work site and randomly evaluates several classrooms, hallways, offices, and public spaces. They survey the areas expecting them to be dust-free, with shiny floors, clean carpet, pristine glass, and no apparent maintenance problems. After the results are tabulated, the award winners are announced, and this evening we're recognizing the 2017 award winners. In the Alternative School category, the Enterprise Academy Custodial Team earned top honors. Please join me in congratulating Michael Tarpley. Mr. Tarpley? Octavia Back is the other member of the team and she's unable to join us this evening. In the Early Childhood Center category, the Marshall Early Learning Center team took top marks. Please join me in congratulating Lead Custodian Charmin Wells. And team members Vaughn Hicks. And Linda Kelly. At the elementary school level, the Hilton Elementary Team earned top marks. Please join me in congratulating Lead Custodian Charlotte Green. Also part of the team Calvin Hendricks. At the middle school level, Booker T. Washington Custodial Team received the Cleanest School Honor. Accepting on behalf of the team tonight is Lead Custodian Larry Ligon. Mr. Mr. Ligon's team includes Christopher Daniels, Makisha Parks, and Jimmy Rodriguez. The team from Heritage earned top honors in the High School category. Please welcome Lead Custodian Tammy Davis. I believe Shirley Jones is unable to join us. The men and women before you keep our schools safe and clean, and they're an even important part of the team that supports and assists our students and staff every day. On behalf of the school division, thank you for your commitment and congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. While they're taking their seats, I'd like to acknowledge the guests that have joined them this evening, their family and friends. Would you please stand and be acknowledged? And also like to recognize their school administrators, our Plant Services Executive Director Keith Webb, and Custodial Supervisor Marcella Bullock. Thank you and again, congratulations. Training and development are top priorities for the Newport News School Board. As part of its collective effort to maintain effective leadership, the school board has participated in numerous in-service programs, conferences, and workshops through the Virginia School Boards Association and the National School Boards Association. This evening, our school board members are receiving their own awards for their dedication to advancing their expertise from the Virginia School Boards Association. The V SBA Academy provides training in effective leadership and governance to school board members and support staff. Each year, the V SBA recognizes board members and superintendents for their dedication to improving their skills through conferences on leadership, school laws, strategic planning, and legislative issues. The Academy Awards are presented to board members and superintendents who participate in professional development activities. Each of the persons being recognized this evening has a certificate from V SBA at his or her seat. These awards honor their participation in the Academy's programs for the past two years. There are five levels of recognition. Chairman Gary Hunter and school board member Douglas Brown earned the Award of Distinction. Vice Chairman Carlton Ashby and school board member Shelley Simons earned the Award of Honor. Superintendent Dr. Ashby Kilgore earned an Award of Excellence. Board member John Ely earned an Award Achievement. And school board members Marvin Harris and Jeff Stottill earned Award of Recognition. Our Award of Distinction honorees are invited to attend a special luncheon during the V SBA Annual Convention this week in recognition of their achievement. Each of these dedicated public servants have received award certificates and distinct lapel pins to symbolize their commitment to effective school governance through participation in the V SBA Academy. Board members, on behalf of the student, staff, and citizens of Newport News, we thank you for your dedication and leadership of this school division and congratulate you on your own awards. Again, we wish congratulations to all of tonight's honorees. This concludes the recognition portion of our meeting. At this time, we'll take about an eight-minute break so that our honorees and their families may leave if you choose to do so. Of course, you're welcome to stay. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stay in recess for about eight minutes.
Newport News Public Schools strives to create a safe and nurturing learning environment for all students. With several bullying prevention programs already in place, our staff and administrators make safety a top priority every day. And many schools raised awareness during the month of October, which is recognized as National Bullying Prevention Month. At Riverside Elementary, kindness is woven into the school's everyday culture. During October, the kindness tree was decorated by classrooms standing together against bullying. And the entire school participated in the Unity Day Parade. Students and staff wore orange, a vibrant color selected to show support to those who have been bullied. CNU's drum line helped lead the procession, and Newport News Police Officer Hillman encouraged the students to continue their lifelong support of buddies over bullying. Crittenin Middle School invited Parents Against Bullying Virginia to talk with sixth graders about creating a no-bully zone at their school by being kind to one another. Parents Against Bullying encouraged students to think before posting messages on social media and to be proud about what makes them unique. To celebrate this diversity, students participated in a fun dance party to help students be proud of who they are no matter what others think. And all students at Washington Middle School were invited to a student-driven bully prevention rally. Professional school counselor Wendy West oversaw the second annual program, with students organizing the entire event. Through student speakers and a drama club skit, students at Washington were reminded to not be a bystander by communicating with teachers, to recognize the difference between bullying and a conflict, and to remember that every adult is there to help. By forming partnerships between students, families, teachers, and community partners, Newport News Public Schools is creating a climate where bullying is not tolerated. Every year, Hilton Elementary celebrates their birthday with a few hundred friends partying in the streets. Well, not so much partying as running to the point of exhilarating exhaustion. This year's fourth annual Hilton Hustle 5K featured the largest crowd yet, with over 260 runners celebrating Hilton's 98 years of academic excellence. CNU's men's basketball team volunteered their morning to help runners warm up before the start of the one-mile fun run. Many runners dressed up for the occasion, competing in the annual costume contest that accompanies the running. The fun run and 3.1-mile race wind through historic Hilton Village, giving runners a scenic view of Hilton in the fall. A highlight of the race was the persistence of fifth-grade teacher Matt Allen. Hilton's current Teacher of the Year had always been the top runner among the school's staff at the first three hustles, but hard work and determination had Allen win the race with a personal best time. This year's hustle was organized by the school's PTA, with Amy Clinkenbeard leading a motivated team of 45 volunteers, including members of CNU's service fraternity Alpha Phi Omega. Through race registrations and community support, Hilton raised over $11,000 to purchase a classroom set of Chromebooks, bolster classroom libraries, and gather needed supplies. And local businesses generously donated prizes and gift certificates, making this one of the best birthday celebrations for Hilton Elementary. Thanks to the alumni of Gamma Theta, young ladies at Crittenin Middle School are learning to live life with class, optimism, and a little extra sass. Hampton University's Gamma Theta chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was celebrating their 25-year reunion, with some sororors traveling from across the country to H U.'s homecoming weekend. Since Alpha Kappa Alpha's success is judged by their quality of service to others, these ladies decided to host a community service activity during their reunion. Twenty-five Gamma Thetas designed a girls' day party for 30 of Crittenin's young female scholars. The Girls Empowerment Workshop focused on staying safe online, building self-esteem, and discussing anti-bullying techniques. The alumni and middle schoolers began building relationships during an engineering design challenge and were able to express themselves through a creative art project. Humorous skits, informative presentations, and thought-provoking discussions illustrated the importance of protecting personal passwords, presenting their real self online, how to handle cyberbullying, and leaving a positive digital footprint. As the afternoon empowerment workshop wrapped up, all the ladies participated in an energetic interpretive dance to symbolize their beauty and potential. Together, the Sisters of Gamma Theta helped Crittenin students learn the importance of staying safe in a digital age dominated by social media, while reinforcing their self-worth and value as smart young ladies.
Welcome back. Welcome back, and I hope you enjoy the school board's spotlight. During our meetings, we provide the time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and also toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we consider your comments and concerns and get back with you at a later time. Do we have any cards?
Yes.
We do. We do have cards. So, we do have cards. So, before I read that, please comply with our three-minute limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals that you have thirty seconds, and a red light and a beep means you need to conclude. At this time, I have card from Mr. Ford McFall, is that correct? Mrs.? Oh, Mrs., please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ford McFall. I am here to speak on behalf of the Warwick High School PTSA Board. The other board members present with me this evening are Joan Hersichorn, Kathy Belfiore, and Melissa Sale. The letter, in our, in our letter to the school board dated October twenty-seventh, we expressed our concerns about recent gun incidents at Warwick. We are here to address this same subject this evening. Twice this school year, in September, and again in October, students have brought guns into our building. Because the school administrators received a tip in each case, they acted to remove the weapon and the student without incident. We commend our security staff, our SRO, and our administrators for protecting the safety of everyone in the building. As a PTSA Board, one of our responsibilities is to advocate for the students, faculty, support staff, and administrators of our school. On October the twenty-fourth, we met Principal, we met with Principal Frazier to discuss these alarming incidents, express our concerns, and offer our assistance. On November sixth, we had a meeting with Ms. Susan Tilly and Mr. Brian Nichols for the same purpose. These meetings have given us a better grasp of Newport News Public Schools' policies regarding disciplinary action for students with criminal behavior. We made some specific requests at our meeting with Ms. Tilly and Mr. Nichols, three of which they have agreed to consider, and we are still waiting for their response on those action items. However, some of our requests seem to be beyond their authority. We have been told that both gun incidents were stemming from community problems. That is not an acceptable excuse. This school district cannot wait for community problems to spill over into our schools. You know where the hotspots are. The central office gets daily reports from the police department telling them of any activity involving students from the previous day and night. Students suspected of criminal activity should not be allowed back into the high school until they have been properly vetted. We want to know, what are your plans to stop students with criminal behavior from coming into our building? We recognize that these problems are not isolated to Warwick High School, and while we are here to urge you to act for Warwick, we also believe it must be addressed at all Newport News high schools. We are proud of the many positive things that happen at Warwick, and we stand behind the entire staff in the work they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will take your comments under consideration. Thank you very much. Are there any more cards?
I have no more cards.
Okay. We're going to move the agenda. Next in front of you, we'll have our consent agenda. Item number three-point-oh-one, the minutes from the board retreat, October sixth, twenty-seventeen. Three-point-oh-two, minutes from our regular session, October seventeenth. We have our financial reports and our revenue and expense from October twenty-seventeen, as long, well as our child nutrition services. We have three-point-oh-four, we have a personnel report in front of you, and also three-point-oh-five, proposed revisions to the school board meeting calendar. Second. You heard the motion and the second. Time for the question. There being none, Mrs. Tinton, please call the row.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Stargill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
And Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to our action items, item number four, four-point-oh-one, personnel actions.
I do, I have two recommendations to make to the board this evening. First, let me begin with Lyndon Hott. Lyndon, if you'd stand for us. I'm going to recommend Lyndon become our elementary assistant principal at Palmer Elementary School. Mr. Hott is, has his master's degree from George Mason University, another master's degree from the University of Birmingham in the United Kingdom, and his bachelor's degree from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. He has been an English instructor and an English lecturer in Korea, and most recently has been the lead ESL teacher in Spotsylvania Public Schools in Fredericksburg. So, I want to recommend Mr. Hott for the position of assistant, elementary assistant principal at Palmer Elementary. The second recommendation I have tonight is Amura Cameron. Oh, she moved. All right. To be our special education supervisor. Ms. Cameron has her master's degree from North Carolina Central University and another master's, master's degree in psychology from North Carolina Central University, and her bachelor's degree also from North Carolina Central University. She has been a, a special education teacher in Durham, North Carolina, began her career and went to Hampton and then to Virginia Beach, and now is gonna, I'm gonna recommend her to be our special education supervisor in Newport News. Amura Cameron. Thank you. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
Second.
You heard the first and you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Mrs. Tinton, please call the row.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Stargill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Ms. Ely.
Four.
And Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Okay. We're moving on the agenda. Item four-point-oh-two, the cell tower lease extension at Dembie and Mitchfield High School sites. I'll do a little background of those we have, but these two cell sites at these particular two schools, they were approved in two thousand and two. The rentals from those two sites currently, we get about seventy-four thousand dollars a year. Those current leases extend for ten more years. And the cell tower manager company is requesting that we extend these sites for an additional fifteen years, up until year twenty forty-two. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
You heard the motion and second. Any question? There being none, Mrs. Tinton, please call the row.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Stargill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
And Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four-point-oh-three. Now, we have a whole lot of folks want to be on our property. There's a request for a billboard lease renewal at Booker T. Washington Middle School. See, the Adams Advertising, Inc., currently leases a partial on our school site at Thirty-Ninth Street. They are, right now, we, we have negotiated renewal lease from eight-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars to twelve-hundred-seventy-five dollars per week. They want to have a special deal and have eight weeks total for ANU during this lifetime of the lease, so they want to do this for about eight weeks. You see it there up there. Can we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
You heard the motion for approval and the second. Question? There being none, Mrs. Tinton, please call the row.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Stargill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
And Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Okay. We'll, we'll keep moving on to item four-point-oh-four. So, as we all know, at the end of our last board meeting, our illustrious Dr. Kilgore Superintendent has announced that she's going to retire. And wow, what big shoes to fill. So, at this time, there's lots of things that go into finding and selecting our new superintendent. So, in front of you, there is a superintendent search timeline. I could tell you right now, there's a, there's a little, there's going to be November third, oh, no, November third is the announcement to the public, so we've announced to the public that we're, have a superintendent search, and the VSBA will help us in that particular search. And you can see the other following dates there. Do we need a motion to, to approve the timeline? So, we do, we do, we do need a motion to approve the timeline that's in front of you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Get a chance to get up and on. Very good. You heard the motion and the second. Question? There being none, Mrs. Tinton, please call the row.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mr. Stargill.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
And Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Okay, very good. Item number four-point-oh-five, appointment of our acting superintendent. At this time, the board asked for, we wanted, again, to do a little bit more deliberation until we actually appoint someone. So, at this time, this evening, we'll delay that until a further date to be noticed, notified in the future. So, we all keep moving. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to our reports. And we have item number five-point-oh-four, Huntington. So, Huntington is, everyone knows, has been on our chart for a long time. Since twenty-ten, the renovation and replacement of Huntington Middle School has been included in our CIP request approval by the school board. The funds for the projects have never been appropriated in the city council's approval of their capital improvement plan. More recently, the facilities conditions assessment of all Newport News buildings indicates significant improvements that are needed immediately for Huntington. I believe in the next year, within the next year or so, it's going to need a new roof, HVAC system, that's going to cost millions of dollars. Today, a resolution is being proposed to direct the superintendent to analyze the future needs and for the, in the further future use of the Huntington Middle School, and to make a recommendation to the school board. And hopefully, the resolution will be announced today, and we can take action in December. Dr. Kilgore, would you have anything to add to that?
No.
I, I could tell you what the resolution, and I'll give you a little bit more history and what may have to happen if the resolution approved. The school was designed many years ago to accommodate about two thousand students, and currently, we have just under five hundred students. If the resolution is approved, we're going, we're going to have to relocate those students in that particular building. And so, what we want to do is kind of prepare parents and those who may be affected, that when the resolution approved, we cannot build a new building, we can't build a new school, we can't replace a facility without having those students in that same place. So, this hopefully will get the ball moving. I really would like to see something there. We're not sure what it is, but this resolution will hopefully get the ball moving. Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? There being none? Okay. Item number five-point-oh-two, twenty-eighteen Newport News Public School Legislation Program. Legislative program, yes. We're going to have Mr. Finneran, is that correct?
It's a real pleasure, privilege to be here tonight to talk to you about the school board's legislative program. Each year, you approve a series of position statements, primarily regarding funding and some policy that may, may come up at the general assembly session, or issues that you'd like to see come up. So, tonight, you have already on-board docs, a copy of the draft program containing the position statements, and, and some other, other details and resources for this. Going to start right off with the, just start with, at the beginning, it's a timeline. This is a long session, and it's, so it's a sixty-day session, January tenth to March tenth. They count every single day, even weekends and holidays. Crossover, which means that the legislation that's proposed in the House will have to be finished and sent over to the Senate, the legislation that's proposed in the Senate will have to be finished and sent over to the House for approval. The crossover is about midterm, about February thirteenth, and that's when you'll see a lot of bills either having survived or not survived, and then a lot of focus on the budget comes around that time as well. What's interesting is that the veto session is not actually, even though the session ends March tenth, the veto session will not be done until April eighteenth, which means that all of the bills, legislation, and even the budget will not have been officially approved. We'll have a good idea, but nothing will be officially approved until about that date, which means, of course, that you will send off your budget to the city council, I think it's by, before April first, so that'll be before that date. So, there's some guesstimation that goes on, as you know, on that. Some important dates this week, the VSBA delegate assembly and the, and the VSBA conference, and I believe that Ms. Simons is the delegate and Mr. Hunter is the alternate, and I'll talk about that a little bit later on. The VSBA Capitol Conference, that's a day for you to come up, and all school boards across Virginia to come up, meet on some issues, hear, hear from some of the lobbyists with the VSBA, and then go and see some legislators, if you have some time, that day or the next day. And January twenty-ninth, just to let you know, the, our PTAs will be up there on January twenty-ninth doing their advocacy, and they're, always have a big crowd of people up there. One more thing I don't have on that is an event we hope you all come to, it's called the Take Your Legislator to School Day. Have a little, a little invitation that we sent you, as well as other elected officials, of course, our legislators. On November twenty-eighth, and it's going to be a tour of our career pathways in Newport News Public Schools, and you'll actually get on a bus, and we'll go to a couple of schools, and you'll have some narration along the way. It'll be a good time. I, I think, I think our legislators and other guests will learn a lot more than you, but I think you'll also enjoy it, and we do hope that you come and be a part of that, that great event. So, that's a look at just the beginning of things. Let's see, back up here. So, in addition to being a long session, this is also what's called the Budget Session, and because Virginia operates on a biennial budget, the governor has a chance every two years to redo the budget and, and introduce it. So, this is his last budget, Governor McCullough's last budget going out. The new governor will inherit his budget once it's approved, and the, it will actually be presented on December eighteenth, and that'll start all the, all the jockeying with the money committees, the House and Senate committees, over, over state taxes and spending. And again, that really, that, that budget will not be reconciled until the very end of the session, and then, of course, officially on April eighteenth. So, there'll be a lot of, a lot of discussion this year on budgeting, which is really what I'm going to talk about in the next slide, which is re-benchmarking. Now, that's a, that's a term that's used that describes what the general assembly does every two years. It looks at the main cost drivers that go into direct aid to public instruction, and they update that for inflation, for benefits, for student enrollment, for salaries, all the things, primary drivers of, of public education. It's estimated that for this next biennium, the total will be about four-hundred-and-ninety-one million dollars, so around two-hundred-and-forty-five million per year. It shifts a little bit each year, but about that much per year. What's interesting, though, is that over the years, there have been a lot of cuts to the formula, and I think it's important to recognize that because our position in this, in this legislative program asks for full funding of, of the re-benchmarking, which would be that four-hundred-and-ninety-one million. But if the past cuts had not happened, that would actually, that, that re-benchmarking would probably be around a billion dollars. And so, you can see by the state eliminating a number of funding drivers, they have trimmed their responsibility to K-12 education by about half. And just to give you one example, it's right up here, and the state capped funding for support positions, that saves the state three-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars a year. Of course, it costs local school boards, who have to either fully fund those positions on their own, or eliminate the positions. And I think about thirteen thousand positions were eliminated across the state after that happened, and I just got some information today that says that today only a hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand of the two-hundred-thousand K-12 positions are recognized in the SOQ anymore. So, as we, as we fight for the four-hundred-and-ninety-one million, we, we also need to remind our legislators, that is a lot lower than it really should be, according to past funding formulas. And of course, in, in, in budget, teacher salary increases, this has been a perennial position by this school board to look for the state, to come up with some additional funding for teacher pay raises. I'm sorry to say that it's, it's been a longstanding position of our school board and, and most school boards, but the state has not been strong on that effort. You'll see, I put the chart up on the right-hand side, just as a visual, to show you how many times out of ten years, the state's provided its state its share of a teacher pay raise, and it's only three times. Every other time, the school board has to come up with all the funding, if they, you know, can give a raise, and that's, of course, not, not been every year. So, you know, the result is that teacher salaries on the left-hand side are about fifty-three-hundred below national average, and this is a, a study by Rutgers, just two years ago, showed that the average twenty-five-year-old teacher in Virginia made just sixty-nine percent of what a comparably educated, private-sector worker would make in, in, in the same area, working the same hours and with the same education. And you might say, well, that's fine, if they're twenty-five, they're young, they'll get, well, the problem is, it gets worse. By the time they're forty-five, it goes down to sixty percent. So, the funding issues for teacher pay are very dire, and you'll see on the next slide why we, another reason why we need some additional funding. Now, what looks like good news is that last year, the general assembly voted to set a goal of paying teachers above the national average, and that was supported by a hundred-and-thirty-eight of the hundred-and-forty legislators in, in the general assembly, one abstained, and I think one was absent. So, I think it's incumbent upon school boards and, and their representatives to go up and say, let's please act on that legislation and make that, start making that happen. Of course, related to that is the teacher recruitment and retention, and again, in the, in your school board priorities for legislation is to do some things, have some things done at the state level. The school board's doing a lot of it already, through the, a lot of the human resources programs, but if you take a look at this time on the, I guess it's the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see the reason we need to do more of this teacher recruitment and retention programs and, and support. Over a four-year period, two, we, there are a reduction of two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand teachers going through an official teacher education pipeline in, in the United States. So, right now, and we have data up there from two thousand and fourteen, which means that next year in two thousand and eighteen, when most of them graduate, we'll have two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand fewer to choose from. Big deal when you're trying to staff school divisions. And you're- And your legislative program calls for really a variety of things that are also being called for by the superintendent's association and by the board of education, as well as the school boards association, increasing text flexibility in licensure, extending the provisional license from three to five years, and that will be done only if the superintendent of the local school board approves that. Provide more support for coaching, mentoring, and professional development. I think this school division is doing a lot of that already. If we could find some funding for that, it would help out in our budget as well. And then transitioning from the traditional five-year master's program that has taken over in Virginia to a four-year teaching program. What we've heard is that a lot of prospective teachers, they finish their four years, and then they have to decide that they're going to either do their fifth year, if they don't have the money, they, we might lose some good teachers. Let's see, last priority position is capital improvement funding. I don't think I have to talk too much about this. We know the dire state in, of capital funding in our locality and across the state, it's similar across the nation. It's not just about money though. Research does show that students in substandard buildings don't do as well as students in very modern buildings. So I think that's something that we should ask the state to return to being a partner in this school facility funding. Now finally, we did talk about the delegate assembly and the VSBA convention that's starting tomorrow, and on Thursday, the delegate assembly, they have a variety, they have actually 10 new positions. I had this run up here, there are actually four new positions, and I've sent those out to all the school board members, and I've talked to Ms. Simons, and who will be our delegate representative there. So I won't go over those, but if you have any questions about them, I'd be happy to answer anything at all, and can work with you between now and Thursday if needed on there. They're all good positions, we support all of them. So finally, next steps is we'll monitor legislative issues going forward till, through the next few weeks. We'll provide, I always like to provide our legislators with a copy of the draft program, even though you won't approve it till December, just so they know, have an idea what we're thinking of. And then action item at the December school board meeting. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, whoever has.
Yeah, I was wondering about the thing that you said about the four-year undergraduate major in teaching.
Yeah.
Is that something that you're proposing that NNP S would accept as criteria for a teacher, or is it a program that's already in place?
Well, I think it's already in place. Most, many colleges have gone to an automatic five-year master's degree in teaching, and CNU has, and I believe the state, CHEV, State Higher Education in Virginia, is looking, will need to look at how they can bring teaching back into a more of a four-year program, so you don't have to get a four-year degree, say in chemistry, or math, or English, or whatever, and then take that final fifth year to get a masters, masters of arts in teaching. So, and because we're finding that some students are just deciding to do something else after they've done four years, and they don't have another money for fifth year, and so to provide more opportunities in the state to do a four-year degree.
And then Ms. Simons.
What was the statistic that you gave, it wasn't in the PowerPoint, about the funded positions?
Yes, that was an interesting thing. Today, out of about 200,000 K-12 positions in our school divisions across the state, 136,000 are funded in the standards of quality. And of course, those that are funded, it only funds the state's share of that, so you can see how the state has really dropped in its support of positions.
So if they're not funding all the positions, when we want to give everybody a pay raise at an equal level, it means the state's not really funding?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other, Mr. Dodger?
Mr. Hunter.
Yes.
I know there was a little change in amount in the general assembly statewide. Do you have a sense that, you know, we're going to be in an environment next year where instead of having, you know, kind of having to defend the purpose and the legitimacy of public education, shift it over to what it's really going to take to take on issues like, you know, better pay for teachers and construction for school buildings, and start talking about a more positive agenda?
Yeah, I really don't have the position to say, to comment whether they will be, we still have to see whether or not the House goes one way or the other. And I think the, one of the things that I've found is that most legislators do want to support public education, but when it comes down to money, it, the best intentions are sometimes go out the window. So I'm hoping that the shift will, I'm hoping that any shift we see will help public education. But I also know that money's a hard thing to get around when you don't, when the state says it doesn't have it for this or that. So I think it's incumbent upon us all to, you know, take these numbers and these statistics and the needs to, you know, all of our members of the general assembly. So I'm sorry, I really can't answer that question, I just, I've seen it before where a whole committee wants to do something, but they're just told that we don't have the money.
One, that's only that one.
(laughing). Yes, 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 yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, sorry, one question, I guess, general, I think we asked a report.
Sure.
But I think general, board members, community activists, public, what can we do in reference to getting a full support?
Yeah, that's a great question, and really, when you call as school board members, it gets their attention, it really does. When you go up there for the VSBA day, it gets their attention. If you go up there some other time, it really gets their attention. E-mails.
PTA day.
PTA day is a big deal. They have a well-organized event where they have all the issues in front of the PTA members, and they go and knock on doors and really crowd the hallways. But I think what I've heard is that when they see someone like me coming, they know what I'm going to say. But when they hear from school board members, superintendents, and actually just general public, that makes a huge impact. You can get 10 phone calls, and it can be a tidal wave of opinion to our legislators. So I would just say, you know, appreciate the question because it's a good reminder that it really does make a difference.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I guess, go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Pat, for the report.
Sir.
Have you heard anything about any mandates from state, past school board, to local city government on fully funding, you know, public school system? I know the code of Virginia talks about, you know, the state must ensure fully funded school system. So since they're cutting our money, and we have to go to battle with the city to increase those funds, so is there any legislative mandate towards the city?
No, the city is mandated legislatively to fund a certain portion of the SOQ. Our, every city in Virginia meets or exceeds their funding mandates, but that's because the funding mandates are very low.
Right.
But they do exceed by a large percentage already, to be fair, what their mandates are. So I, it might have to come from a different angle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Veneran, thank you for the report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're going to move right along to our new course recommendations for 2018, 2019. We have Ms. Kathy Marino, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. I have a much lighter topic to discuss with you this evening. Thank you. Good evening Chairman Hunter, school board members, and Dr. Kilgore. I am happy to be here this evening to present to you new course proposals for the upcoming 2018, 2019 school year. These courses are being brought to you this evening and are firmly connected with college career and citizen-ready skills, which as you know, guide what we do here in Newport News Public Schools. These proposals promote interest in STEM careers and provide exposure to coursework that parallels the increased demands in the job market. These proposed courses will expand magnet offerings as well as to provide additional support for our English learners. This process began in September, when information was shared with our schools and curriculum supervisors regarding course proposals. There was a tremendous response to this request, and after submissions of these proposals, a committee of teachers, administrators, and curriculum specialists met to review each submission. It's through the diligent work of that committee that I'm able to share their recommendations with you this evening. Revisions to Heritage High School's STEM Academy include streamlining the program options available to include a more relevant and modernized course of study. The Bureau of Labor and Statistics predicts that by the year 2024, there will be 4.4 million computer science-related jobs available. With the proposal of AP Computer Science Principles, which will replace advanced computer programming, our students will participate in a more rigorous computer science course, ensuring that our students are globally prepared for a career within the computer and information technology industry. In this class, students will design, implement, and interpret computer-based solutions to problems in multiple application areas. New course proposals for Warwick High School's Governor's Health Science Academy will complete the existing strand of health informatics and support services. Health informatics is a rapidly growing field with a projected 21% increase in demand for workers throughout the state of Virginia from the year 2014 through 2024. In this course, students will explore aspects of health informatics to include the history of health information technology in the U.S., the electronic health record, ethical and privacy issues, as well as cybersecurity and data breaches. Woodside High School has proposed four new courses that will enhance the rigor within the arts communication magnet program. History of Art is a semester-long course in which a combination of art history, art criticism, and personal art production will bring a balanced approach to art appreciation. This introductory course will provide insight to those students choosing to study the arts in college. Career Development in Visual Arts is a semester-long course also, that will investigate the varied needs of the emerging artist. Topics will include selecting a career focus, technologies needed for the 21st century artist, emerging art forms, preparing work for shows, and applying for commissions while providing a view of the working art professional. Advanced Creative Writing will provide students in the creative writing program a culminating experience through which students will create book-length pieces throughout the year in preparation for publication. The publication process will be studied in depth throughout the year, and students will be better prepared for writing and publishing after high school. Advanced Theater Arts IV will provide a more intensive study of theater arts for the advanced student who is considering a pursuit of theater, both professionally or at the university setting. This course will prepare students for a rigorous college admissions into selective theater programs and other professional opportunities. Other career technical education courses proposed for the 2018-19 school year include entrepreneurship and advanced entrepreneurship education. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, careers in entrepreneurship are expected to increase. Entrepreneurship plays a vital role in the growth of the U.S. economy. The first-year course will introduce students to the exciting world of creating, owning, and launching their own businesses. The second-year course is designed for students who wish to concentrate on advanced strategies. Students will establish, market, and maintain their own business while in this course. Through food science and dietetics, students will develop a deeper appreciation for the food system and the impact of science on the food and nutrition industries. This course is one of the recommended state courses for students wishing to complete a specialization in the health sciences or human services pathway. Food processing is one of Virginia's largest manufacturing sectors, with companies in the food and beverage sector employing more than 35,000 people and creating more than 7,300 new jobs in the Commonwealth. With the approval of these new career and tech ed courses, Newport News Public School students will have an opportunity to earn eight additional industry certifications. These new courses will also increase the number of students earning a complete or status with regard to the state. The final course proposal includes Foundations of Science for English Learners in Levels 1 and 2. This course will allow English language learners an opportunity to take a hands-on science class utilizing ESL strategies to incorporate language development in instruction while acquiring basic vocabulary and science skills prior to enrolling in earth science. Offering this course will fill the need for our English learners to be enrolled in more core courses and will allow for further development of their language skills. This concludes the committee's proposals for new courses. I look forward to returning in December for your approval on these courses. Following the December meeting, we will work to register students, starting in February, their online student registration process, and then professional development and material procurement will occur in the spring and summer, so that we're able to begin offering these courses in the fall.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Just comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And my comment is just, I just admire the research that goes behind the development of the courses. So as I was listening to you speak, again, research and looking futuristically in reference to when our young people graduate, where are they going to go as far as college or career, that the research has been done, so the courses are developed, so it is pertinent to what they want to do. So that career pathway is very evident as I look at the courses there.
And I will give the credit to those who propose these courses, because they did a fantastic job in really doing full research before coming to the committee.
Yes. Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, as I say, I wish these classes were around when I was in school. Makes me want to go back to school. This is really super exciting.
Any other, Mr. Harris?
I just wanted to say that I'm really, really glad to see that there's an option to take AP Computer Science as a class in school, instead of just the option to take it online, because at the recent Student Advisory and Community Education meeting, there was a lot of, a lot of concern over the lack, or as they felt, of moving towards more of an emphasis on technology, and they really, really wanted to see technology instituted more in our schools and taught more in our schools. And so I think that that's something that students are going to be really, really excited to be able to have the opportunity to take those classes.
We certainly have to. That's our plan.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Dodger.
Chairman, I have to highlight the history of art. You know, in college, that course was offered, and it was called Art in the Dark, and it got a bad rap. But the real power in that, that kind of course offering is to connect something going on in the art world with what's going on in the real world, and to look at it, because what you find is that art reflects the moment in time of culture. So the art in Europe, pick any time, you know, that you want to look at, reflects what was going on in the political world, what's going on in the architecture, what the emperors or the kings or the queens were building. It reflects the nature of the government, the stress. So I think adding this kind of depth to our program really has a lot to offer. I think you only find out after you get into it and make those connections, if we're going to have that kind of, you know, depth and connections with this.
Anyone else? Mr. Marino, thank you.
Thank you.
For your report. Okay, moving on. Next up, we'll have Mr. Brian Nichols. He's going to elaborate a little bit on this new accreditation matrix and absenteeism.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Hunter, Dr. Kilgore, members of the school board. It's a pleasure to be here before you today, continuing the conversation about these new accreditation standards. It is really a game changer for schools in the state of Virginia, and it will be for Newport News. So tonight, I'm going to bring to you probably the most talked about and controversial standard in the new accreditation matrix, and that's around chronic absenteeism. I have before you the- I have before you the matrix. You can see that there are now six different factors that are related to accreditation, and each one is weighted equally. So whereas in a current system, it's about SOL achievement and therefore graduation on the high school level, now each one of these factors are weighted equally. Last month, we went through graduation and dropout, and you got a chance to see what the measurements were and then how we fared. We're going to follow the same sort of pattern tonight around chronic absenteeism. Back up right there. So we'll go through that same sort of thing. So let me take you through what chronic absenteeism is. And it's important to note because it really reshapes attendance and what we see. You get an attendance report that talks about average daily attendance. This is not average daily attendance. Our average daily attendance is really, really good. Over 95% of schools do very well, and we're accustomed to that. This is about chronic absenteeism. So let me, the definition is missing 10 or more percent of the school year, which for us would be 18 days. You can have a really good average daily attendance rate and have kids missing more than 18 days. It masks the problem. The part that I'm excited about in this is absenteeism is absenteeism. It doesn't matter if it's excused like you have a note or you don't have a note. You're not at school, therefore you're not learning. So in chronic absenteeism in this measure, it incorporates all absences, not from school, absent. So excused, unexcused, and suspensions all count towards chronic absenteeism. So it's important to note, and it's a pretty big shift in the work that we're doing. So that's chronic absenteeism. The performance levels really follows the same measures, that stoplight system, Level 1 at or above the standard, which you want to be to be accredited, near the standard, and then below the standard. So here are the different rates, and I'll show you all three of them today. And at or above standard, 15% of your student population or lower can be chronically absent, okay? Near the standard is 16 to 24% of your total student population. And then below the standard, if you have 25% or more of your kids missing 18 or more days, you would be below standard. There is a back door into being accredited, which really states that you're making progress. That's the part about the model that is really good, is that you may not be at lower than 15, but you're better than you were last year. And isn't that what we want schools to be, better than they were the year before, working towards that goal? So that's the piece there. So how are we doing? So here's what you have, and I went ahead and color-coded it to associate with the different levels. So this is 2016-17 school year data, so the last school year. And it's the percent of students missing 18 or more days. In the original version of this proposal from the state board, high school was not a part of the absenteeism measure. Because as you can see, high school absenteeism is the highest in the state, in the nation. Elementary, we're doing really well, 9.56% of our total elementary kids would be chronically absent. Middle school, it's 14.53, and then you can see the climb to 17.38 in high school. All of our high schools are fully accredited. Graduation rates are through the roof. But we would be marked yellow near standard, potentially. Within that, there's variance between the high schools, but as a high school group. And as a school division, we look pretty good, 12.85%. As I said, it wasn't originally in the original proposal. It wasn't until very late that high school was added. And that's because if you look at the research, and we've looked at a lot of research nationally on absenteeism, and National Education Association is probably the best report to look at. It's very rich in data across the nation. Says that 1 in 5 high school kids is chronically absent as a national statistic. So 20% of high schoolers in the nation are missing more than 18 days. So we are better than the national rate, but we're not as good as we need to be. But we're better than we were last year. So let me show you that. Potentially. There we go. So here's attendance in Newport News. We look at it in three buckets. 5 to 9 days, 10 to 14 days, and 15 plus. If you're in that 5 to 9 day category, maybe you got the flu. Or maybe something happened, you had to miss some days. But we don't want you to cross over in that 10 to 14, and then we definitely don't want you. So you can see that we don't, 18 is important from a state measure, but our measure is 15. So our measure is always going to be a little more rigorous in this state. So in 2015, 10,211 kids in the first category. And you can see that 15 plus, which we would consider chronic, over 8,000 kids. 8,000 of our 29,000 kids were chronically absent. Fast forward a year, 2016-17, you can see that each one of those ranges went down. And if you think about it, it's a little bit counterintuitive. If we work really hard on the 15 plus and get that number down, you would think more kids would be in the 10 to 14 category, or more kids would be in the 5 to 9. We've reduced the number of kids in that category by almost 6,000 kids. And it wasn't by accident, it wasn't by chance. Let me show you what we did. We, oops. One of the things that we did is we did a correlation first, and we put attendance rate, chronic absenteeism versus accreditation. There is a direct correlation between attendance and accreditation. When kids are in school, we do better, but we had never looked at that before. So what we did is we developed this Division-Wide Attendance Committee. We have principals, we have attendance officers, we have a whole lot of folks on this Division-Wide Attendance Committee because we had a problem. We have a problem. And it's a problem that's getting better, but it's getting a lot of attention. So the whole awareness of the problem, that's step one. You have to admit you have a problem. So we've done that as a school division. Because what we were doing was we were chasing notes, and we just wanted to excuse the absence because that's what state law says we have to do. But we can do more than just what the state law has. We've got to get kids in school. So we've done a lot of data awareness and training. I can tell you what our data is today on a dashboard that we have. Every school has it. Every attendance officer has it. So day to day, I can give you from a division level, individual school level. If you want to know what is the 6th grade attendance at Booker T. Washington, and how many kids have missed five days, in two clicks, we can tell you what that is. We didn't have that before. So data awareness and data reliability has been a huge push in this piece. With everything we do, we put a campaign around it. So we wanted to let kids and families know that it's important to be in school. Yes, that should already be known, but we went on an attendance campaign. You can see our logo. It's "I'm here, every minute, every class, every day." And it's a nice series of posters that you'll see when you walk around our schools and materials. And we're working on getting those materials into doctor's offices in different places in the community, working with the Smart Beginnings Board to kind of coordinate our efforts there so that kids can see and families can see that it really does matter. It matters in kindergarten, it matters in 11th grade. And as your kids get bigger, it's even more important for you to be in the game with them and make sure that attendance matters. GPA is better, everything is better with better attendance. And when we say college career and citizen-ready, all of those require good attendance. So we need to develop those habits early. So our division website has been updated, so you can see the campaign, the expectations, and the information from families. So we're doing less chasing of a note and more getting to the root of the problem because it's about our relationships with our families and our kids and finding out what's missing. Because if something's missing, we have the resources to fix that. We have a lot of power and influence to get kids in a different direction and to work with families. We do a lot of great work at South Morris, and we do a lot of great work with our family engagement folks. So if it's about resources, we can do that, but we need to know it's an issue. So family by family, we are making a dent in this. I'm very proud of this school division because we took this on before it was in a matrix for accreditation. We don't wait for the state to come out and say, "This is what you have to do." We have a really smart team working on it right now. It's part of the strategic plan. It is a project in the portfolio of projects around student supports. So a lot of different things going on with attendance. So can you make a difference in attendance? Because that's been a controversial thing. Yes, you can. We absolutely do. So here's your timeline. Once again, this is our transition year. So attendance can count, or it doesn't have to count this year, depending on which way we go, depending on how it plays out for the school. 2018-19 will be live, so that's next school year, in a new accreditation system with all those factors live except for their college career and civic-ready indicator. And then 21-22, those are today's 8th graders. They will have that college career and civic-ready indicator applied. So so far, we've done a high-level look at all six. And now we've gone in depth with graduation dropout and now a chronic absenteeism. The next part in the series that we'll dive into will be about academic achievement and achievement gaps. We'll put those two together because it's really about SOL tests. That one's a little less clear, so that'll take a little bit of explanation going forward. And then we'll leave college and career readiness out until the state decides what that factor is. They're looking at things like internships and industry certifications and AP testing and things like that. And you know that's a big push of ours anyway, so we feel good about it. We just want to see what they're going to come down on. So that's chronic absenteeism, the definition, the matrix, and everything we know thus far, especially how we're doing. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Any questions, Mrs. Simon?
So clearly, when we have elementary kids who are missing school, there has to be something going on with the family. What are you all doing to make sure that families are getting their kids to school? And how are you kind of holding parents accountable for making sure that they get their kids into school?
It's really a multi-level approach to it, and it really starts, and it always has, but we're really reinforcing that with the classroom teacher. So when I taught and a kid was out, I called a family and said, "I really missed so-and-so." That's the first line of defense. We don't want the first thing to be an attendance officer showing up at your house. So that's the first piece. This is really that classroom teacher connection because that's who the kid and the families are closest with. And when they know they're out, they reach out and find out why they were out and glad to see you back and so forth. So that's the first level. And then it grows, it could be the assistant principal piece. So it really starts as the school-based piece before it branches out. Unless we find out immediately there's an issue, whether it's around homelessness, whether it's around... When you go through the research, there are a lot of different things that say kids don't come to school for, could be close. So we find out, we solve that problem as quickly as we can. So that's where it starts. And with elementary kids, if they're not coming to school, it's not their choice. You know, they're not choosing to not be at school. It really is a family piece. And really educating families, especially in pre-K and kindergarten, that every day matters. And kindergarten's a big deal, that you need to be in school. When you look at our data, it's, the worst part is pre-K and then kindergarten, and then it gets really, really good. So really establishing those attendance habits early with our pre-K and our kindergarten families.
Any questions?
You're welcome.
Mr. Stager?
You put up 18 days as a, you know, as a tripwire where we start getting to 10%, you know, absenteeism. But, you know, that's on line.
Yes.
That's a month of school days, almost. And so, I mean, you know, you're bracketing it to sort of three different categories, like a week, two weeks, to three weeks, and up to a month. And what a difference it would be if you cut that in half.
Any others? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say that this is very exciting to see making the connection of the data analytics, using data analytics to make the connection between absenteeism and accreditation. And to hear that the correlation was made, I'm very encouraged by that. This is what I preach all the time in terms of making that connection and that what gets measured is what gets improved. So by measuring it, monitoring it, tracking it, that has already started to create the improvements that we see. So hats off to you, encouraged, very encouraged to see that is being measured and being improved. And I know as we stay on top of it and continue to measure it, that more improvements will be made.
The ability to have it in real time has been a game changer for us to walk into Sanford and say, "Hey, I've noticed..." Oh, you noticed too, and then get into that conversation. So you're right, data analytics has been a huge piece of our work. Absolutely.
Anyone else? Any more question? Mr. Nichols, thank you for that wonderful report.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to continue down our agenda. Item number 5.04, Membership Report, 5.06, Attendance Report, 5.07, Control Report, and 5.08. Comments by our superintendent.
All righty, thank you very much. As some of you may know, this is American Education Week this week. And so we wanted to talk about our campaign in Newport News, our hashtag "NNPS Proud." So if you have something that you're proud of in NNPS, we ask you to go on your Facebook or on our Facebook or Twitter and join the group to share what you are proud of in NNPS. We are, we've asked our schools all week long to post their messages of the great things that are happening at their schools around college, career, and citizen readiness. So if you have a story or something that's real neat as a community member that's happening with your young person in our schools, please tell us that story and especially do it this week during American Education Week. We've got another award winner in Newport News, Wade Beverley, who is our plant, our plant services supervisor. He was named as the Virginia School Plant Manager of the Year for the entire state. And so now he's in the running for a national award. So I guess we're not having him yet at the board meeting because we're waiting for the big award, huh? So we'll see what happens. But we really are proud of Wade, and he's just a wonderful contributor to our school division. A really nice thing happened last week at our Engineering Design Challenge. Last Friday, we sponsored that with Verizon. And at the end of the design challenge, they gave us a $10,000 grant. That was kind of a neat, that was very neat. So that's going to go to fund other engineering design challenges. It's going to fund STEM Labs at two of our elementary schools and our annual STEM Community Day that we do at the end of the year for all of our students and families. So that was just very nice, and to say thank you to Verizon for really supporting the growth of STEM in Newport News. Pat mentioned our Take Your Legislature to School Month and our bus tour. So we just encourage everybody that was invited to get on the bus with us and see some really neat things that are happening at Warwick and at Heritage on November, what is it, November something?
29th.
November 28th, Tuesday, November 28th. And then lastly, we are, we'll celebrate Thanksgiving next week. Our schools are closed for students Wednesday through Friday next week. And so I just wish everybody a very happy and fun and safe Thanksgiving vacation. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, again, we have time for our audience to come forward. Do we have any cards?
I have no cards.
There being none, we'll move on to item number seven, Matters by the School Board. And first, we'll have Ms. Our student representative, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you. I'd like to start out by saying that we had our first Student Advisory Group on Education meeting at the end of October. And we had a lot of really great input. A lot of students came forward talking about things that they wanted to see happen in our schools. And there are things that we are hoping to pursue later on in different meetings. And it was just, it was a really productive first session. It weren't really well. In terms of the recognitions that were made today, I'm very glad to see that custodial staff were recognized because at every Newport News Public Schools, school that I've been to, they've always just been phenomenal. I'm really glad to see that they're getting the recognition they deserve. And I'd also like to say congratulations to all the school board members who received awards on behalf of the Virginia School Boards Association. That was very impressive. It seemed like everyone, everyone got a certificate. It was really cool to see that, you know, we know we're doing a great job, but it's cool to see that you get some recognition for that. And I'd also like to say thank you to Mrs. McFaul and all the other members of the Warwick PTSA for coming forward. I know that it's not easy to address issues of student safety, especially when the students are the issue. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of every student in NNPS who's ever felt, you know, a little nervous that day. We're really glad that you're working hard to bring these matters to the attention of the school board and to do what you can to keep us safe.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
All right, well, it's a, really been a fantastic year. And we're off to a, I think, a great start to the school year. I want to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you again in December. I want to report tonight, I was very proud I got a chance to attend the Virginia Beach Justice Initiative Dinner where Newport News was honored. We are the only school division in Hampton Roads that has a anti-human trafficking program that we teach to all of our middle schools. And so I want to thank the superintendent and our staff for putting that curriculum together. We were honored there as a, we are, we are the leader. Once again, Newport News is leading in this fight, leading in this initiative. And I just want to say, express my gratitude on behalf of the citizens. I believe that it's going to, it has already made a difference, and I believe it's going to make a difference in keeping children safe. So we have it at all of our middle schools, and we have it at select high schools. We have the program going. We were able to adopt our own anti-human trafficking program and teaching the kids awareness and helping them to stay safe in the community. So very proud of that. As well, very proud of getting this VSBA Award of Distinction honor. Had to go to a lot of classes to get that honor. Had to go to a lot of classes to get that honor. Eighty-four credits, I was looking at it, had to do eighty-four credits in order to get that. And I'll just, for the citizens to be aware, it is, it is the law, it is part of Section 22, that school board members must go to training and learn, learn about what's going on legislatively, learn about what's going on from an education perspective, go to VSBA events and national school board events. But it's one thing for it to be a requirement, but it's another thing to, to take it on as a, as a, as a real honor and a responsibility. So I want everyone to know, they take that very seriously, getting, getting those classes and learning more about the legislative process, understanding how education and law affects our community and becoming a better board member for all of you. So I will be in attendance for the rest of the week at the Virginia School Board Association Annual Conference. Anybody wants to come see me, you can see me over there. It's very, you know, very close by here in Williamsburg. But I attend that every year faithfully, and I learn a lot. It's an opportunity to learn what all other school boards are doing around the state and bring innovative programs back to our school division. And I'll as well tell other school divisions around the state what Newport News Schools is doing that is so award-winning and groundbreaking. Like, for example, I'll be telling people at the Virginia School Board Association all about our human trafficking program and how we're the first and we're the, we're the only ones. And that's something to be very proud of, and you better believe that when you see it, when you see that curriculum in other portions of the state in the coming years, you'll know it started with us. So those are the kinds of things that we're able to do. And we appreciate the citizens sponsoring us to go to get that training and, and learn and become better. The last thing I want to mention tonight, which is, I know I'm kind of the, always bringing up the budget stuff, and it's just, you know, I'm the downer. But we saw tonight, a very, we're at a very critical time. We were looking at a resolution for Huntington. As was mentioned in the report, you know, it's been, it's been on the CIP budget every year that I've been on the board here and been kicked back to us by our city council or by our forensic council. And to found out tonight, it's been on, it's been on the CIP budget for seven years straight and been kicked back to us every year as it's nice to have. It would be nice to have, it would be nice to replace a 93-year-old school building. That's, that's a nice to have. It would be nice to replace leaky roofs. That's a nice to have. Not a need. That's what we're being told. It's not a need to replace, to have heat in schools, to have work, have new heating systems. That's a nice to have. It's a nice to have to have paving in the parking lot. That's a nice to have. That is what we're being told repeatedly, over and over again each year. And I implore the citizens to let council know that it's not a nice to have. We are now in a situation where regardless of what happens in the future, we have to prepare students to either we're going to have a replacement for Huntington or we're going to do some alternative things with the students that are there. And we have to, citizens have to let folks know, these capital needs are dire, they're not just nice to have. We have over 100 classrooms that are trailers in our city. 114, we call them learning cottages, but that's just, let's be, let's be real, that's a fancy name for a trailer. So your child, more than likely, at least some point in the time, they're going to school, they're going to class in a trailer. So we tell kids, education is really important, education is really valuable. This is really what you, this is really what you need to have so you can be successful in the future. Education is the most important thing in the world. Now, this is what your parents and the community, this is the price tag they put on education. It's nice to have. You don't, you don't really need to go to school in a building like the Discovery STEM Academy that is winning an award, that will be honored at the Virginia School Board Association as a, as a school of great design. That is what we can do when we get a chance to replace a building, is that we can build an innovative learning environment. But we have to get past a point where we consider a roof, heating, air conditioning, nice to have, not needed, not necessary. Because that's, that's, although, those are the projects that were kicked out of the CIP. Those are the projects that we were told, you don't need those, you don't need to do those things. And so it's just very important to, for the citizens to be aware that we are at a bending and a breaking point. The school division has 60% of the real estate in the city, 60%. 4.1 million square feet compared to 2.2 million square feet for all the rest of the city. 60% of the real estate is the school division. We're 20% of the budget. 60% of the real estate is the school division, but we're 20% of the budget on a year-by-year basis, 20%. So we got to get past "nice to have," and we got to get back to a, we got to get up to a portion of the, of the budget that reflects our importance within the community. 20%, where we're 60% of the real estate, doesn't reflect our importance within the community. Trailers, 114 trailers, doesn't reflect our importance within the community. 93-year-old school buildings, doesn't reflect our importance within the community. Our average school building age is right around 50 years, doesn't reflect our importance within the community. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Simons.
Yeah, to piggyback on what Mr. Brown was saying, you know, Warwick High School is a good example of a building that is past its, its prime. And we really need to be looking at that. And I think, you know, safety is probably a factor in that as well. I mean, you look at some of the newer high schools like Woodside and Heritage, the flow through those buildings is wonderful because they were designed correctly. They're modern buildings. So, so we need to be looking at schools like Warwick. But what I wanted to finish up with is, I am the chair of New Horizons Career and Technical Center Board, and I'm really happy to report to everyone that we have a new program in advanced technical careers. And we had a breakfast, and our counselors came from Newport News Public Schools, high schools. And I'm just so, I was so proud that they all showed up to this breakfast to learn about all the new courses that we're offering to students. And wow, we, we have some really neat opportunities at New Horizons in cybersecurity. And we've revamped the, the construction, carpentry is now construction management. And we've just got some really neat things so that our students can be career-ready in addition to citizen and college-ready. So I just want to thank all the counselors for coming out to that. And I want to finish by saying that I'm very proud, I got to go up to the governor's mansion to receive on behalf of New Horizons, the Governor's Award for Excellence and Innovation in Education for a new program we have at New Horizons called Mechatronics. And this program was really a result of talking to industry, talking to some of the advanced manufacturers in our community like Continental and Cannon Virginia. And they really wanted a program to get kids ready for careers in advanced manufacturing, a lot of electronics and computer programming involved. But the program is just amazing. These kids are going to be able to get jobs, like, you know, $60,000 a year jobs right, right out of high school if they, if they get involved with this Mechatronics program. So just wanted to tell you that good news and wish everybody a really happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. Mr. Ely.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank the PTA from Warwick High School coming out today and your concerns with security in the school system. That's a concern of mine, too. And it's, it takes a community and families to get a hold of that situation with violence in the school system and in the community. It goes back to parents being parents. Parents need to take, take, go back and take that initiative to go through your child's belongings. You are the parent. You need to make sure your children are held accountable for, and you know what's going on in your child's life, even with social media. Go through your child's Facebook page, your Instagram page, know what's going on. So hopefully, we can catch things that matter happen to keep, make sure our kids at our school are very safe. I'm excited about the entrepreneurship program that we're going to have. It's amazing, giving our kids the opportunity at an early age to learn business and to be able to sell it to one day, maybe open up their own business in Newport News. Because there are great things happening in Newport News. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I'll be participating in an event we have this Saturday at the House of Prayer down to Newport News. Come out, we're going to be doing Feeding Feeding 5000. So make sure you bring, come out, we're going to have live band, live music, and most of all, great food. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Next will be Mr. Stajl.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So thank you, Ms. McFall and other representatives who came tonight from Warwick. So PTA, I know you have children there and you have deep kids in the school. That issue of school security spans a wide range, and it's not something that the school board or the administration has been blind to at all. And I know over my career here, it's been something that I've been very concerned about. And we've had discussions and we've implemented measures. And I think it just points up that you have to be continually vigilant about this. And I'd like to suggest that we ask the superintendent to put together a committee. He can just review where we are, bring in the kind of security consulting that we've gotten in the past, and let's just, let's review where we are and where we need to, how we need to approach that. It's, it's very important. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stajl. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for coming by PSAT. Yes, safety is paramount in my, in my mind. And I think that's a great solution, that we do need to probably relook at policies and procedures and implement them. I hear the same thing out in the community. You know, are the kids actually safe? It is a comprehensive issue. And I think at the school division, I think it's quite important that teachers pay attention, counselors pay attention, because normally you could probably get some sense of specific students that may be headed in the wrong direction. It's normally not a surprise when that, when that student shows up with something or does, or does something. I also like to thank the administration staff. Thank you individually, doing a great job across the school system. I hear a lot of great things out in the community about the, about the administration. So just keep up the good work, okay? Also, congratulations to new hired employees that came on. I wish the young man had stayed the mathematician because I was spoken a little bit of Korean to him. Hungu, I mean, you know, who comes from now? Spent a couple of years there. But other than that, I think the school division is in the right direction. It's one of those things that I think as board members, that we must stress to the city leadership, what we actually need on a continuous basis. I speak to every council member. I think they all can contest that they know my position. It is real simple. If you say you care, like my mother used to say, "Show me the money." It's pretty simple. I think Mr. Brown put it strategically. At the bottom line, we need the money. So educating our kids, and many of your schools are just not going to cut it. Why? Because most of them are probably full of lead, asbestos. And as soon as you are doing a type of construction on it, then it has to be abatement for the whole building. So I guess they need to make the hard, hard decisions. Once we do the resolution, hopefully they'll push things in the right direction. And sometimes we just have to get aggressive as school board members to let them know that, you know, we're just not going to tolerate it anymore. It's just that simple. So have a wonderful holiday and don't eat too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Aspie.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. I just also want to thank you for coming out to Warwick High School a couple of times, Friday, and participated in that faculty meeting. And security and attitude was shared by the building administrator. So of course, we do take the safety and security of our children extremely at a very high value, and know that's very, very important.
And to our new administrators that we introduced tonight, we want to congratulate and welcome them. And also a big hats off to our custodians and how they were recognized, because I often share and emphasize the cleanliness, the setting of the building has a lot to do with learning and situation and settings there. My, my last comment before saying happy Thanksgiving is, I woke up one morning within about the last month and had the television on. And in campaign season, sometimes people get just a little, little bit crazy. And they begin to say things that are not true. And as I was looking at that, you know, looking at this commercial and seeing things in the commercial and hearing things in the commercial that weren't true, and then hearing things or not hearing things that should have been said in the commercial. As I was watching that person or that campaign talking about Newport News Public Schools, I really felt challenged in that situation and setting. Because for some reason, in that commercial, I didn't hear a 93.4 graduation rate. I didn't hear a dropout rate of 2.3%. I didn't hear that 80% of our second graders are reading on grade level. I didn't hear that thousands of industry certifications were earned by our children. I didn't hear that the achievement gap had been closed. I didn't hear that 80% of our children are in youth development. For some reason, that was not mentioned in that situation and setting. So I wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate the Newport News Public Schools family, to our superintendent, senior staff, everybody from the superintendent all the way to our custodian that works in, the night custodian that works in probably the smallest school in our situation, that every single person is responsible for doing that. So the good, no. The great, no. The awesome news that's happening, Newport News Public Schools was not shared in that situation. So I felt that I would share it in this situation and hopefully that that is known throughout the community. The great things that are happening in our school system, particularly in the last 10 to 12 years, has just simply been astronomical. You heard me say it last, last school board meeting, at a Cube Council of Urban School Board meeting, and I just, just mentioned our graduation rate and kept going. And people said, "Wait a minute. What is your graduation rate? How many students do you have free and reduced lunch? How in the world are you doing that?" Well, through not just simply a growth mindset, but the innovative mindset that the superintendent and this entire school system has had. And I want to restate and reiterate, it's not just the superintendent, it's every single employee, the parents. It is a collective, collective and collaborative effort that has made that happen. So I don't know, maybe I'll see a commercial one time, you know, that has that. But thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to each and every single one of you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Aspie. Wow. I was going to say, there's great things happening in Newport News Public Schools. Says our vice chair, and apparently not the campaign ad. But I'm with you, I was with some superintendent today and two board members from a much smaller Virginia school west of, very close to West Virginia. And it's amazing that I was telling them our graduation rate, that we had about 70% of our kids on free or reduced lunch, and we had a on-time graduation rate at 93.4% with a dropout rate at 2.3%. That's just really unheard of. Wow. Man, there's great things are happening, the STEM programs and all that other stuff. And I'm just going to take this really quick moment right now to, and my boards, I'm going to stand up and I want to publicly and personally thank Dr. Kilgore for her leadership over this past 10 years.
She ain't gone yet.
She says she's not gone yet, but one, one day that's going. And to that effect, I do want to thank the awards that our STEM Academy is getting and all the new courses that are coming. The Entrepreneur Magnet, wow. All these things have come to fruition under the leadership of our Dr. Kilgore. And not only that, we had an increase in the SOL scoring. We had so many CTE certifications that the kids are getting now. We have Early College that are dual enrollment, this BARK program like none other, absolutely like none other, we're still being funded, all under the leadership of our illustrious Dr. Kilgore. That being said, as we, I'll take on a more serious note, as we prepare ourselves, as we've got and we've invested and hired the services of Virginia School Board Association to assist us in this superintendent search over the next few months, I assure each one of you who are listening, the staff, teachers, our community leaders, we will ask for your input via survey that's coming up in a few months. There's more instruction, so we'll have town meetings. have town meetings, we'll have some, all types of things to ensure that when we, we're getting that right and that particular person that we're looking for. And so be assured that we'll, we'll do a national search, we may find that individual right here in our own school system, we may find here in our own state, or we may find it out of state. But it's going to be exciting, it's going to be a lot of hard work by our board, and it's also a sad time that she's leaving, but also exciting time. And so I just kind of want to relax everyone's minds that we will be doing a national search and that we will be asking for your input via survey in the coming months. So please be on our lookout for that. Other than that, I want to wish everyone a wonderful and happy and very, very safe vacation Thanksgiving Day. That's typically the largest time, the largest number of folks that are out on the road. So drive safe for those parents and those teenagers out there who think they can drink and drive, please do not. Just want everyone to come back safe and ready to learn again after, you know, you need all this food and energy so that you can, you know, strengthen that mind and open that mind up. So other than that, I want each one of you to have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. There being no other business, I consider this meeting adjourned.
All righty.
Who's big?
Ms. Hinton? Thank you, sir. A lot got done.
Not late, not too late, very good.
I was, I was very, very nice on you.
Yeah, honey, well.